Hello.
Hey Susan, how you doing?
How are you?
Alright, I'm uh. Making mistakes entering in the host code. Mistyping my numbers, so. So um. Did you see Megan's message?
Oh, I did not.
Oh.
I know she won't be here tonight.
Yeah, she won't be here. She's going to the Bruins game.
Oh, good for her.
And she's cheering for the other team.
Oh, no. That's that's sinful.
Totally. Yeah.
Wow, those are those are hot tickets to come by.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's remarkable.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. My nephew is, you know, he a former, you know, he he loves hockey. And yeah, so he's he's beside himself.
Yeah, I bet.
Yeah.
Very fun.
Yeah, it is the. And right, a good team to follow, a good bunch of like, yeah, it's a good bunch of guys.
Certainly is.
Yeah.
Great weekend of hockey.
Yeah.
Sure it was.
So like, do you find? Other? Small towns named Boston and root for their teams too? Do you like scour the map? Oh, you know, Boston, Illinois?
Right?
We did our first. The the my my bank has done, you know, these. Some public meetings and things like that, but not not my group. And so we just did our first one. And so that was a lot of fun to actually. Be in person, talking to lenders and developers. And yeah. Yeah.
That was the first time in person?
Yeah, since COVID.
Wow, that's a long time.
Everything we've done has been. Zoom trainings, all these things. Yeah. Now, and we were getting spoiled because. Right, the attendance was skyrocketing, really like, oh, this is great, you know?
Yeah, not in person, it won't.
Yeah, well. But there's so much so much more rewarding and you get. You get a lot more information about. What's going on like in this case, it was Rhode Island, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that was fun. Not like the Bruins, though.
No.
No, no, we're not. You know, we're not setting any records. All hail the great Aaron Kokinda. Who's just walked off screen.
Yeah.
Good evening, Bill, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Alright. Alright, we got.
Everyone.
Evening, how's it going?
Yeah, very good. How are you doing, Jim?
Not too bad.
Alright. Hi there, Matt, how are you?
I'm doing alright, how are you guys doing?
Excellent, excellent.
Great, seventy-five degrees out.
Yeah, yeah. That's a. That's very lovely. Were you, Bill, did you? Bike to Rhode Island and then bike home, you know, like, did you just like? I'm just gonna stay on my bike as much as possible.
I'm still at work before I get home tonight.
No, no, I'm sorry to hear it.
That's right.
Well, um. With that, welcome to spring, let's get started. Megan is unable to join us for this meeting, so we will. We will miss her. So Jim, I've made your co-host and we can get started, so first of all. Let's call our meeting to order. And do a quick roll call. The. Bill Spalding, I'm looking at you on the screen.
Here.
Yeah, Jim Hogan.
Here.
Alright, Matt Lowry.
Here.
And myself, Theon Oll, here, so. And happy to be joined as always by. Aaron Kokinda and Susan Old from the town. Our second item is the approval of the March twenty-eighth minutes. Does anybody have any edits or comments? If not. Is there a motion? Alright, so. Matt makes the motion to approve. Jim, I think you came in a close second. All in favor? Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so. That's all approved. Our third item is to. Continue our discussion and an update from Jim and Aaron about MBTA communities.
So I'll take that one for to lead off. So we had our kickoff meeting with the working group for the MBTA Communities project. I thought it was very successful. Every member of the working group, with the exception of the the town resident who's on the group. I was able to attend in person. So we discussed a number of topics as it relates to. An introduction to the to the. Nature of the working group, the final work product that's looking to be completed. As well as some background information for those who did not have it regarding what the. MBTA multifamily district would needs to be the requirements from the state. We clarified some of the nuance associated with that. The third-party consultant that we have. Was able to give a brief overview of a model analysis on the basis of. Defining a half-mile and a quarter-mile catch basin around each of the two stations that are eligible. And what that would give us for a baseline, so we could. The the high-level takeaway for this group is that a half-mile circle around Wakefield Junction. You know, very crudely drawn. You know, is going to be sufficient to meet the minimums, there's some questions in regards to if that's where we want to cite it or not. Anticipate that that's a topic that's going to be very active going forward in terms of the next meeting or two. In order to determine where the working group has a vision for this multifamily district to be. Envisioned. Also additionally, Aaron gave a great presentation and overview as it relates to the existing zoning in Wakefield. Kind of get people up to speed as it relates to some of those different elements, but I think the overall takeaway for this group for now is. We have a strong working group, and my perception seems like there's a strong alignment in terms of vision, in terms of. Trying to get something that's workable for the state, but also workable for. Wakefield, making sure we manage this process in a manner that's going to be consistent with our development patterns. The one component that's a little bit up in the air going forward. Is we've been discussing what's the best process or best way to maintain transparency while also support, you know. Being cognizant of our IT challenges right now, so there's there, we may or may not be pivoting to an all Zoom. Zoom method in order to facilitate a more open meeting style, but. We're we're still in the process trying to figure that out, if that does happen, I'll make sure that all the members of this board. Are aware of it, so we can make sure everyone has the opportunity to participate in whatever manner is appropriate. I know, Aaron, if there's anything else you wanted to add to that, but that's kind of the the takeaways I had for for this for this time.
No, I think we're in good shape, Ezra, it's been really helpful, I'm meeting with him again on Friday. To play around, we're kind of doing the internal back. Backs, background stuff that we won't really, we'll see at the meeting, but. This group isn't going to be the ones playing around with the compliance model that the state has sent over. So that's going to fall within myself and engineering to kind of play around with. What models will work based on the discussions that we have at our working group and then looking at our dimensional regulations and. Making sure the state has done a good job of providing us with this compliance model, so. By just looking at different parcels, like Jim said, the half-mile, quarter-mile. We would meet it within that half-mile, no problem. Exceed it quite a bit, but there's definitely different areas in town that we should be looking at when it. Comes to the bus and to the commuter rail, I know we're a commuter rail community, but we do have the bus here as well, so. Even though the bus doesn't. You know, the bus stops don't play into to what we have to do, I think it's an important thing that we need to acknowledge as well, so. We'll just keep working behind the scenes and have something hopefully ready for the summer. And that's all I had to add.
That's terrific, any questions, Matt? Or Bill?
Well. I know. We may want to get on all the same page in this, I know. We had some discussions about Greenwood Station and then it came up Wakeville Junction. Not a lot of people know that, but somehow. We kept calling it Wakeville Junction, but it should be Wakeville Station or Wakeville Downtown or something, just because I'm sure more people are gonna. More people in town know where the junction is and they know where Wakeville Station is, so. I think we all just need to get on the same page that we're talking about Wakeville's. Downtown Wakeville Station and then Greenwood Station. The the epicenter of the. Radii for the areas.
And something too that we talked about is being mindful of our commercial district within our downtown area, we do have that. Half-mile radius right now for mixed-use multifamily that you are all familiar with. But this particular thing forty-eight is multifamily. We could still have a special permit process, it could be an overlay on top of an overlay where people still would have to go through the. The special permit process, but. Just something we're all being mindful as well.
And there's. There's no issue of one overlay trumping another.
Not that we've seen yet, it would be really just like the outskirts of the overlay, like the downtown, if it didn't fall within this forty. Forty-eight district, it would still maybe fall within that mixed-use multifamily, so. But again, we're not that far, I just wanted to be make note of that, too, I think we're just being mindful of our our commercial districts, both in Greenwood and our downtown area.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, that's. That's important. Bill, any?
Yeah, well, just thanks for the update and appreciate the extra work on all this. Do we need to, like, at what point? Does our board need to? Take more action or I know there's this committee going on, is there anything that you see? That any other members of the board can help out on or do research on or whatever is needed?
I think the way I would communicate it right now is that. The working group, you know. We I would anticipate that other members of the planning board, we want to almost keep purposely. Arms-length away from the process. With Matt and myself being on on the working group, anyone else who's more actively committed could theoretically constitute a quorum.
Okay.
Additionally, I think that it makes sense that. Coming out of the working group, having multiple members of the planning board who have a fresh set of eyes, and I think. One of the things that we're starting to think about as we're getting through the working group is after the working group. On our about August first is where we have it in pencil, not pen at this time. I envision a process where we'll have. Solicit feedback, not only from the other members of the planning board, but members of the public town council. ZBA, you know, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of relevant. Relevant people who probably should have a feedback at this, so I think it probably makes sense to have. The working group kind of put the blinders on with other regards to the other members of the planning board. Finish the the initial planning effort and then go out and make sure that we have an open fair and. Collaborative engagement with other members of the planning board and public.
Understood, thanks for the explanation.
But I would just know if you see any best practices from other communities, you know, the rapid transit, they'll have to have that implemented by the end of the year, so kind of we're keeping a. Close eye on that, if you see any best practices that other communities are doing that you think would be. Beneficial to the town, please feel free to send them over, that's always helpful, the. You know, I've kept my eye on a few different communities, but I think that's always really useful if you see something.
Alright, I also appreciate the update and. You know, congratulations for getting the the working group up and up and running and I'm glad you had a really good start to it and, yeah. Thank you for all the work to come, so that's we're much appreciated. The fourth item on our agenda is to set. The public hearing gate for one ninety-seven to Hot Street, the definitive plan. And so, Aaron, I think I'll open, open it up to you to sort of introduce things and. And maybe some of our timeline.
Sure, so I just want to make note, we have Attorney Schumer here representing Andrew Dorney, who's. This is his plan, they look familiar to you, they were with us back in December as well as David Jordan as well. For the plan, so they're back here with the definitive subdivision. You know, as we know with Zoom, it makes things a little difficult, unfortunately, I don't know any differently. From Zoom, when receiving these plans in the past, they would bring them to this meeting. And from there, we would set our first public hearing, and that's what we're here to here for tonight. I did receive all the plans, I received the check from Andrew Dorney. I have all the plans sitting here as well as the other things that are in the checklist. I have forwarded you what we currently, what they had, they went through the subdivision, definitive subdivision checklist. I know we have some people that have been on this board a number of times. If you have a chance to review it, to make sure that you have everything that you need. I sent it through a Dropbox link that they provided for us, but I have all hard copies here as well. So for this meeting, since ninety days have elapsed since the preliminary subdivision was submitted back in December. There is a hundred and thirty-five days from the acceptance of the plan, which would be tonight, and then we'll set the public hearings. And we have to post them in newspaper fourteen and seventies before the public public hearing. So the clock would start ticking tonight. I don't know if any other board members that have done this before have anything they want to add or anything I forgot, but I can turn it over to Attorney Schumer as well. And David or Andrew, if they have anything else to add. And I see Matt unmuted himself, so.
Yeah, the the only thing I was gonna say is that we should post it on. On our website too, just so everyone can see it.
Yes, I will work on, once we accept it tonight, I will get it on all the appropriate documentation on the planning board website. For the public to review. And any other appropriate information that is needed, so. I'll work with Jen on that. Attorney Schumer, do you have anything you'd like to add? I know this isn't your first rodeo.
Good evening, Aaron and and members of the board, Attorney Jesse Schumer, representing the applicant for the record. I don't have anything further to add, Aaron, we appreciate your time in reviewing this in advance and we look forward to presenting at the public hearing.
Great. So with that being said, I know you guys wanted to get this on our agenda sooner than later with the summer month coming. Unfortunately, unfortunately for us, we have a town election on our next planning board meeting night, which is April twenty-fifth, that's about to be August. So we probably could not set the next public hearing unless we did a special meeting, I don't know what your timeline looks like. But also with the posting of the fourteen and seventies, so it looks like the next, the first public hearing could be May ninth. I don't know what that looks like for for all of you here.
For for me, Aaron, that night is fine, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to our engineer David Jordan, who I'll be relying on to do much of the heavy lifting that night, so David. Oh, David, you're on mute.
Sorry about that, yeah, thank you, Jesse, for the record, David Jordan with Raymond Peterson, the project engineer. Yeah, May ninth is fine with me, that that works, that works well, thank you.
Great. And Andrew, I know they're here representing you, but did that date work for you if you'd like to be in attendance as well?
Yep, that works for me, thank you.
So I know you provided me with the correct language for the to set the public hearing in our local newspaper. As well as notifying of others, I have envelopes here. And I will just put the legal notice in there as well as posted town hall and any other appropriate places, and then we will share with. Internal departments too for comments and things like that, so. Does any planning board members have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, so. It's. It's not, it's. Within fourteen and within seven, right, so.
Yeah, so if I, yeah, so if we're just gonna go backwards, I would probably post it. You know, on the second. And then the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was getting mixed up between my my dates, so that that's helpful. Wonderful. Well, we appreciate receipt of the definitive plan and look forward to reviewing the documents and. Hearing formally from all of you on May ninth. Any other questions or comments?
One quick one.
Yes.
Chair. Andrew, I love the shot of Alton Bay behind you, that's one of my favorite places, so.
Very good, alright. No pressure for for better backgrounds from the rest of us.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent. Alright, well, again. Thank you. Andrew, David and Attorney Schumer, and. We look forward to seeing you on May ninth.
Here, see you then.
Thank you very much. Our last item on the agenda is items not anticipated by the chair. So. I will open it up to the rest of the board. And Aaron, for that matter.
I can just give updates on some of the plans that we're working on, other than MBTA communities, I don't have any bullet points put together, but I can be. Working on every day, so the master plan, we had our fourth and final survey closed, I believe we received around. Four under respondents, that's just a guess. With like seven hundred filling it out but not completing it, so altogether, I think we had around fifteen hundred responses. Don't mark my word on that, but this is just off the top of my head, which is really great, so now I'm working with MAPC or MAPC is working. On putting a final draft report together for review, and so again, this is building off the Vision twenty-thirty plan that we we worked on. And I was going through that the other day, and I think we're doing a great job and. People don't see this day to day, but there's a number of things that was recommended that we're kind of checking off, either whether it be economic development, things like place making. And and certain things like the open space, where we're currently working on an open space and recreation plan, which I'll talk about as well. You know, looking at ways to engage the public. And things like that, so if you had a chance to look at Vision twenty-thirty before the master plan comes out, please do. But we'll be using that as the living document here in town, it won't be just sitting on the shelf as we kind of look forward. The next ten years, especially with housing too, and with our housing production plan being outdated. And so I think it's another tool in the toolbox for for planning purposes for this group to use. With all kind of transition to the open space and recreation plan, me and Theo sit on. The board, or I'm sorry, the the group for that, the subcommittee. We had another meeting a few weeks ago at this point, and the Horshley, Horshley, what in? I think I'm saying their name wrong. Has put together a draft report and has some questions for some internal departments here, so. I'm having had, I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I will be helping them along the way, but as well as engineering too, with some questions that they had. And we'll be having a public meeting, another survey will be going out in regard to open space and recreation. So and we've shared the master plan data that we received for that topic, so hopefully, you know, a lot of those things will coincide and give us some real. You know, information as we play for apply for grants and and look at our open space and recreational type things here in town. And then the bike test land, me and Bill Renaud will have a meeting on Friday with MAPC to hopefully close this out. While we're working with Safe Streets and hopefully after our meeting on Friday, be able to share that with them and get some get some last input from them about anything that we might be missing. And when that comes to be presented at town council, I'll make sure I share this, share that with the group. So you can be well informed of kind of that plan as we look at. Those practices moving forward, but we've done a lot of work already that we've called out in the plan. North Ave, if you were able to see the town council presentation late last year, adding protected bike lanes, extending the sidewalk there to make it more walkable for everyone. So we're really busy here with plans, and now I think the big load is. Is implementing them, so but a lot of great things, and it's always so good to get the public involved and. And for them to provide feedback and and meet new people in in town, so. And then the Affordable Housing Trust as well, that's still moving along, which ties in nicely, you know, with if we look at our housing production plan and want to update that, that would be a great group. That would be able to work on something like that with possibly a consultant maybe in the future. And those are kind of my. My big things in regards to planning efforts. And then MBTA communities as well, so that's consuming a good amount of time. But I think we're heading in the right direction and a lot of these things are aligning, and that was brought up at our our meeting as well, at the MBTA. Communities Working Group is, how do we use these plans? And the feedback that we've gotten, and I think people need to realize too, the idea of no more housing when the state. If you haven't paid attention to the news, the Attorney General has come out and. Has said, you know, we'll sue communities if they don't abide by this, abide by this forty-eight, so I think we need to look at it. As the community is, how do we make it the best as we can and using our different plans to kind of implement that and building off. You know, our bike and pet accommodations, our open space as well, so those are kind of my updates.
That that's really helpful and. And it's a lot of work and a lot of work by a lot of people and. And it's a lot of work and a lot of work by a lot of people and. Really appreciate it and being able to, yeah, thread things together, because you don't want. You know, these plans to go. Less than fully realized, so. That's terrific. Anyone else? Matt or Bill?
Yeah, I have a quick follow up to. The topic I brought up last week under the same items not anticipated, so for the Northeast Metro Tech, the letter that was. Provided and all that, I did have a conversation with Steve Mayo regarding the town being alerted to open meeting laws, and if. There were any violations or notices or anything, and he reassured me that the town has done everything they can. He also talked to. Town council, town mullen, to make sure that there was nothing that our board or anything else. That we have missed along the way, so I just feel much better about all that, so.
I appreciate you asking and conveying that that information. We got additional individual emails to the planning board, again with the complaint and again with. Recommendations to look at additional information and links, so. And based on our discussion at the last meeting, I don't think it's proper for me to forward. To the group as a whole, but if. If anyone's individually interested, I'd be happy to forward the email from the. That that we received, but again, right, this is not information that's that we would be having any. Planning board public discussion of that.
Understood. The other item I have is, well, we're not meeting. Because of the town election, and obviously Megan's time is up, and we will have. Hopefully, a new board member coming in, and I just wanted to reassure the board. As when Jim and Theo, when you came on board and Megan, I have a whole packet. That if anybody wants to review that or make some updates to it. So that board member, and I still don't mind being that liaison that or once it's all figured out. And the new member joins and I just to to meet and bring them up to speed with how things work.
That that's wonderful, so that that would be great. I hope to meet, hope that he'll be able to meet and have introductions individually with with everyone as well, just on the fly.
Well, there is an onboarding process, like I know it's something I've pushed for for a lot of years. I don't know what other boards do, but I'd like us to have like a nice. Checklist going through, okay.
Yeah, and I I know I took what you gave me, and I've just been annotating it.
Okay.
As as I've gone, just as we've learned, learned things, so I'll forward that to you.
Okay.
As well. Some of it's a little. Ad hoc, obviously, as as we came along, but I was trying to. Come up with rules of the road.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, and yeah. It's a terrific onboarding document with, you know, all the resources that we need, so that was really, really helpful, so.
Does it include the assistance, planning, training, collaborative at all? Because there's so many workshops I know I share with you guys, that could be really helpful. They have the workshops quite frequently. They also do on demand training for some boards. That's something that we'd ever be interested in doing. But I just wanted to see if that was included as well.
I don't believe it is.
I've taken a few of their courses and they're super helpful, and they have free videos too.
Yeah, I'll have to check. I have that on my home computer, so I'll have to check. To see what I do have in the links, but I don't believe that one's in there.
There is. Yeah, there's open meeting law training that. You know, any new town board elected official has to take. Within a certain period of time, right?
Yeah, I know Sherry does a good job of sending that to all the board.
Very good, okay. That's wonderful. Yeah, and I, yeah. Bill, to your credit, it is really important to. Have a formal onboarding process to. Help people. Feel ready and able. To to serve. It does give us an opportunity to thank Megan in abstention, because she's not here tonight. So we very much appreciate everything she's done for the planning board and. I think her quiet voice of. Of of reason and. And consideration, so. The. The the last item, I know we received, you know, a couple of different plans to comment on. That are going to the zoning board of of appeals for variance or special permit. One was an above ground pool, the other was an accessory dwelling unit, and the. The third was an expansion of. A warehouse on Three Melvin Street, and I didn't know if anybody had any comments about. Any of those. Yeah, I had more technical questions as a. A neophyte reading some of some of this information, so I will ask ask them of Aaron and. And Bill Renault, or the some of you individually, just to make sure I have a full appreciation. Yeah, with that, if there isn't any other business. I think. We can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, and I just asked for an update, Theo, in regard to the zoning recodification meeting. I know I reached out to Dan. I don't know if you had any conversations.
Not yet. I I have not. We were. Potentially going to have a. A board chair meeting, right?
We talked about it, yeah, and I know I reached out to Dan. I think I wrote wrote to everyone. I'm sorry, it's kind of leaving my mind right now. Because I've reached out about a few different things to the different board members, so. But something we just want to. Keep in mind, I know that was important to this group, so I just didn't know if you had an update there.
Yeah, so I did codify our discussion about process and. And priorities and I want to, I'll use that and I will. Talk about it with with Dan, and then I will bring it back to the group for me night. And we should certainly should will have met by then. Or potentially the new. The new chairman, new chairperson of the board. Thank you. All right. If there is no other business. I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you. So all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so. Thank you all. I really appreciate all the information shared tonight. In a thirty three minute. Time timeframe, so that's that's really helpful, so.
I don't think it's the record, so.
No, it's not the record. Matt still holds the record. All right. Well. I'll see you. We'll see each other in twenty eight days and we will have voted and all sorts of stuff in the interim, so. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all you're doing.
Thanks, Theo.
All right.
Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Susan.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody.